Yeah. Um, yeah, so. I'm like, I can see it's so not me. You know, it's like a man car. Yeah. It's like, uh. It's like, it's definitely a man car. And you should be like all, like everything is sorry. Yeah. Today was like my first one.
It's September twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen, and I call the board study session of the Rowland Unified School District Board of Education to order. It is now four thirty-two P M. Dr. Mitchell, will you please do roll call?
Carrie Chen.
Yep.
Lynn Evan Camp.
Here.
Angelina Prime.
Present.
David Malkin.
Present.
And Donna Friedman.
Here.
All board members are present.
Thank you. Are there any changes or items to be pulled from the agenda?
None from staff.
May I have a motion to adopt the agenda of the board study session of Thursday, September twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen?
I make a motion. On second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I will leave all in attendance to the Fledge of Allegiance to the flag. Would you please stand? Ready, meet.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Dr. Mitchell, are there any public comments this afternoon?
Yes, sir.
Please note, the public is welcome to provide comment to the board remarks are limited to three minutes unless extended or limited by vote of the board. A maximum of twenty minutes unless extended by the board is allocated for each subject discussed. The Brown Act open meeting regulations under which the board must operate do not allow board members to comment on non-agenda items or information you may bring up that are not in the agenda. Additionally, no action can be taken. However, the board may give direction to staff following a comment. Next book. Roy Humphries?
Okay, uh, Roy Humphries, thank you for all the good things you do. Uh, a disservice to this district's community and the individual. The ex-principal, I mess up his name, I apologize for that, Yusuf Nasos, and of the Nogales High School deserved at least the recognition given at the board meeting for outstanding students. And you failed at that. He deserves a meritorious service citation with a V for valor and an oak leaf cluster in taking the job at Nogales High and staying more than a year. Yes, as I discovered while running for the board, Nogales High School was considered by staff as a violent penal colony to escape from. From the testimony of the staff and Shay Loman, as video recorded, many things have not changed. And apparently, Principal Yusuf has made his escape. And he also deserves a statue out here in front of the district for his, uh, his service to the district and this community. Also must thank, uh, I can't thank enough Mr. Malcolm for running and winning the election. For, uh, I would never, never have sacrificed the many for the few, as this district continues to do. Uh, the district continues to waste taxpaying education dollars on twenty-six excess teachers, as noted by Mr. Flores here. And, uh, the pain to hiring a propaganda organization for branding is, is just ludicrous and an abomination. And, uh, also refusing to video record these board meetings and the bond oversight committee meetings for a cost of sixty-nine dollars. Again, it just goes to what you're all about or what you're not. Thank you.
Next, we will have the facilities report. I will turn it over to Dr. Mitchell at this time.
Thank you very much. So this afternoon, we have for the board, uh, two topics. And Alex Flores, our superintendent of administrative services, will come on for us.
Apologize for that, I was needing some assistance. President Friedman, Vice President Malkin, board members, Dr. Mitchell, cabinet, and audience. Thank you for allowing us to make a presentation tonight on two specific, uh, topics. Uh, tonight, we'll provide information on the opportunity to refinance two series within the two thousand and six bond. And also provide an update on the Alvo project. We understand the dedication that our board superintendent has to our community and transparency. And making sure that we serve our community with the bond funds correctly, with class, excuse, yes?
According to the agenda, I think we might have been two years in, or eight, or something.
At this time, I would like to bring up Russ Hall. And Mark, you're staying a little later tonight. Again, good night. Take two. Uh, we're very excited, uh, for this opportunity to provide you an update on the next bond funding facility improvement that will benefit our students in the Alvo community. Plans were submitted on time to DSA, and we have responded with comments. Our architect, construction manager, consultants, and district team have worked to respond to all DSA comments. And the architect will respond, uh, the final response by the end of this month. When we, uh, when we have all the plans approved and returned by DSA, the bid process for the construction will begin. Uh, we hope to have an approved bid by March, so demolition can begin in April. Although smaller projects, uh, were completed this summer, the project has, as planned, will break ground in December with the installation of temporary housing. Russ will provide more details regarding interim housing and phasing of the project. One of the board's goal is to communicate. I'm sorry. Uh, Zimba Pieto Architects.
Oh, okay.
Apologize. We understand one of the goals, one of the board's goal is to communicate regarding all projects. And we continue to communicate the status of the project, um, as, to inform everyone involved. Recently attended the Alvo back-to-school night, provided an update, and shared which board materials, uh, materials on a board of all the different type of materials we'll use in the project. Uh, now that this update will be provided to the board, I am scheduled to attend a staff meeting next Monday to provide this information as well. So the staff is well aware of the progress of this project. Uh, Jason Garcia is working on scheduling a parent-community meeting for us, and with the assistance of Miriam Kim also. Thank you, Miriam, for your assistance. And again, community members are always welcomed to our CPOC meetings to receive an update on all bond-related projects. We're very excited about all the projects that we're doing here to benefit our students. At this time, I'd like to turn the mic over to Russ Hall from La Desma Meyer, and he'll provide you an update on the phasing and also on the interim housing, which is the first step of this project.
Thank you, Alex. Good evening, everybody. For Alex's request, I'll go over the timeline for the interim housing. Interim housing is consists of six billion and twelve classrooms. On nine twelve, I'm sure you're aware of the fact that the board approved the project. On nine twenty went, went out to bid. The bid process will be completed in November fourteenth. And then there, somewhere around November twenty-fifth through the thirty-first, we'll be setting the interim housing on site, which will be the, uh, the mobile classrooms there. There will be a little work after they're set, there'll be some site work, and some of the miscellaneous activities will take place, but that's a, a general overview of the timeline of that. Um, our goal is to be set and have everything down for the spring break, which is three-thirty through four-three. At that point, the district can occupy the portable interim housing. And that provides us an opportunity to demo the existing portables that are on site that are back in what would be, I think, the northwest corner. I think there's twelve buildings up there, if I'm not mistaken. So by doing that, uh, that will give us a little leverage that we need to get an early start on the project. Pretty excited about that. Uh, the interim housing is used for temporary administration. There's not a lot of grade to be done for the portables. We're not going to be pushing a lot of dirt around. Pretty much going to use close to the same grade that's there. But we'll have to demo and remove a lot of the grass area to put in, and asphalt access for the fire department. And accessibility to the buildings pretty easy. Okay, um, this is a slide that has an overview of all the phases. Um, we have separate slides for each. The pointer's not working. We have separate slides for each of these. So anyways, the interim housing goes inward the golden areas where it says phase one slash phase five. So that's where the interim portals are going to be set. And now I'll look through the other phases here with the individual slides. And again, there's, uh, phase one. Portable buildings will be set along the street line there. That's gonna.
So is that empty filled right now?
Yeah, that's a plate filled right now. So that kicks off the project by setting those first. And then, once those are set and things settle down, then we put the main project out to bid. Then what we're calling phase two will begin. And that purple area there for the building that says phase two, those buildings will be demoed. Those are the ones we're hoping to get started on, um, prior to the summer, so those will be demoed in April. And then there's a dotted line which outlines the area that we're going to use for the contractors, what we call lay-down yard. So those sets are construction trailer there, their job office, and we'll stage materials there. So we'll basically be accessing the project from, I believe it's Janus Lane is the name of it. Be coming in off that cul-de-sac there, which is nice because we won't be traversing across the site. We'll kind of be set up on our, our own little area there, shouldn't be too disruptive. And then we'll move into phase three, once the first classroom building is done. The phase three includes a classroom building, which is, the outline of it is identical pretty much to the other building, but the floor plan itself was a little different inside in that there's a few more classrooms. Um, the phase one has a locker room in it, and so it doesn't have quite as many classrooms. Anyways, the lay-down area is drawn within that area. You can see where it's kind of the dash line there. And we'll continue to access that by coming in off of Janus Lane and will not traverse across the site until the actual phase four. Well, actually, that's not true. We'll never really traverse across the site, we'll just change our direction from access. So in phase four, um, that's when we'll work on the remaining three buildings. There's five total for the project. So the building on the right, kind of L-shaped, looks like it's multiple buildings, all one building, that's the kindergarten building. I'm sorry, I can't get this pointer to work. The building in the center is the admin building, and the building on the left is the NPR. And then this would outline phase five. Once those buildings get done, then we'll be working on the parking lot. And we'll remove the portables from the site, and then we'll clean up the, uh, the yard. And put the landscaping back down, return everything back to, to its, its original setup there with grass and all that. This phase actually will be running in conjunction probably with the finishing, uh, items in phase four. So those buildings will be getting finished up, and this will be a summertime project, so as that's going on, then we'll finish up with the parking lot there. Is there any questions about some of those slides before I go further? I don't feel like I've given this a pretty good job explaining it.
I remember, I remember when you showed these a long time ago. Um, there was a discussion about where the buses would drop off versus where the parents would pick up their students, there's like a separation area.
I don't think we, I don't think we have that slide that shows the, the map of the parking lot. That's existing, correct, isn't it?
But that's hard to see, it's both parking lots laid on top of each other, so you got lines going everywhere. Has this been worked out to separate the two?
Uh, yes, to separate two and actually to include an opening so they could deal to use, so it'd be less of a ball, like that was recommended to the staff that was there. Because the, the parking lot was, was shared with the staff, and they had some recommendations, and we took it back to the consultant to review it, and, uh, we believe that it would work also. Taking input of the staff about after-school activities, how things go when there's, there's some ball might take place. One point I wanted to bring up with the phasing is, as you can see, the timelines are really important. They're year-long phases. So they go from the summer to August, so it's really important that the timelines are met because the movement of students go during that summer to the next, next year, and also for the teachers who are going to be using the interim housing. So it's really critical that we meet those, those timelines. And the first phase, actually, phase two being just a few months longer. The, in phase two and phase three, the buildings are very similar, as Russ shared. But phase two, uh, there's more lead time because there's a lot of steel that's required in these buildings. And as the orders are put in for the steel for the, for the first building, they'll also be ordered for the second one. So that will make us speed up a little bit, and that's where we can get the second building done within a year, or we, we plan to.
For this phase, you don't have the entire August, because there's two dollars that first week of August. So you have only two and a half hours, two and a half months to finish this project.
You talking about the parking lot?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the, the parking lot will, will start the second weekend, start it in June once school's out. And we'll hopefully be finished by the time school starts in August. That's really the only time you can do it, so.
Although, that's a great point. Any August date you see is, is also related to the start of school, this day that school starts. That's the timeline that we have first. We need a parking lot the first day of school, so it has to be.
Will the new NPR room be in the same place?
Um, yeah, it's, it's relatively in the same location as your existing NPR. I think your existing NPR, if I could see it. But yeah, it's basically in the same place.
Is it going to be bigger than?
Oh, yeah. Okay, yeah, it's quite a difference. It's actually two, it's actually two-story. And the upper story has a coral and some band areas and things like that. It's a smaller upper story, but it's.
And without an NPR room, there are several to be, where, outside?
I know something about Rowland, I mean, PR room, item, didn't have a stage, did you? Does this one have a stage in it?
This one has a stage in it, yes. This is more of a lower grade, uh, stage that you're used to seeing in a multiple purpose room. Of course, it's not a production-type stage. It does have a light bar on the back, and it has, um, you know, a forfeit elevation, and it runs the width of the, of the, of the room with the stairs on either side.
So the three-D model that you showed us at our last meeting, at the last time we had a facilities update, nothing has been changed from that one. That was the one where we kind of had to see like.
When the architect Zepi was here, he walked us through.
Yeah, yeah, we saw the three-D model, so everything's pretty status quo to that.
There's no changes in there visually at all. So we're making little changes with plan review, but we're talking about, you know, a plug here and a mic there, but that might be.
And also, we're committed to the board that any significant change that would take place, we would come back and share with the board and the community if there's any changes. That was a lesson learned from several years ago of a project, and, uh, we are committed to that. Staff and the team are well aware of that.
We're going to have the same number of the parking spots. We'll be a lot more parking spots in the apartment.
We can go back over to the board, I know Alex just brought in some of the drawings. The, um, this was to share with the board the phasing, not the specifics of the buildings and locations and so forth. But Alex did bring in the drawings that, um, were presented to the board the last time, prior to being submitted to DSA. So again, as asked, nothing has changed submitted to DSA, but as we're anticipating now those plans coming out of DSA, we wanted to make sure that the board understood somewhat of the timeline and how that project will be phased. Because we're getting closer now to actually moving dirt, um, and so we wanted to make sure that the board understood the phasing. And so we do, uh, we do have the drawings and, and information back here, and can always provide that to the board should you have other questions.
So, uh, for the preview, you asked where the, the NPR, so the NPR is here, and this is how it was depicted in our, in our pictures. I had to put them all together because I don't have one, so I apologize. But, um, everything so far is, as submitted and as shared with, uh, with the board is to move forward with the project.
Okay, so just a quick recap then. There's five phases. The first phase is going to start up the interim housing. Phase two, so we're flying, will be the west classroom, then we'll move over to phase three with the east classroom. And then phase four will include the three buildings on the south end down here. And then phase four and phase five will run in conjunction at the same time. And after phase five, then we will be wrapped up. Yeah.
I think that was the next one.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, so this slide, it talks about the construction alternative timeline, or the, the main project. So on April sixth, thereabouts, we're, that's when we're going to start the, what we call the procurement process for the project. By that, I mean the contractor will mobilize, we'll get some those collected for all the materials, we'll start reviewing the shop drawings, and we'll approve a project schedule. And then we'll demo the twelve buildings in the phase two area. It's, it's important to get a head start on, on these items because these are what we call long lead items with the, uh, shop drawings and the steel that Alex had talked about. It's very important to get your steel moving as soon as possible, looking really slow up a project. Uh, submittals take a long time, too. There's thousands of submittals to go in for all the projects. And then in May twenty-twenty through July twenty-twenty-one, uh, that's phase two, so that's the west classroom that we spoke about, that was up there in the corner. Now you'll see that from here on in, it runs from summer to summer as we spoke about. So basically, we'll be working on a phase, the kids will be excused for summer. When they come back from a summer break, then they'll, the district will have moved and will enter in the building. So that same pattern just repeats itself in June of twenty-twenty-one to July of twenty-twenty-two. Uh, that's where the phase three, we'll be demoing the existing buildings on campus, which are, you see the letters there, C, D, E, T, H, and P one. And we'll construct the new east classroom. And then the same pattern again, from June twenty-two to July twenty-three, which will be phase four. We'll be demoing the remaining buildings, which are A, B, and F, for those of you who are familiar with the campus. And we'll construct the new admin, NPR kitchen, and kindergarten buildings. And June twelfth through August fourth, which is that last summer, um, that's when we'll demo the existing parking lot and remove to re, all the portables on the site. We'll, we'll remove the ones that are leaving, going back to the vendor, and we'll demo the rest that are no longer going to be needed, and we'll construct the new parking lot and finish all the site improvements.
If I can share also, I want to commend the team. I challenged them when we were putting this project together to make sure that, we try to be honoring the, the students who were there the longest. Because this project has taken a little longer, um, to take place. And, uh, I challenged the team to work with phasing and work with the development so that our students who are there now could reap the rewards first. And as this building, these buildings take place, some of the older grade levels, building will take place first. So they'll be able to enjoy that building, that at least, if it's not fully completed, those classrooms will make it enjoy them. And also with making sure our buildings take place for kids first, and administration buildings or buildings like that would be last. And as you can see, uh, the team met the challenge, and it worked out. We believe it worked out to, to be a good plan. I do want to say, this looks really good on paper, and looks good on, on the picture. We're doing a lot of work in a very small area. And, uh, I, I want to thank all the residents, all the parents, and all the students, and all the staff there, because it'll be very tight. And, and some of the recesses, we're going to try to do the best we can, but, you know, for a period of time during construction, there will be compromises. And, uh, we'll see what we can do to, to offer support and, and help. Um, but I just want you to understand that there will, it will be very tight, and it'll be very difficult construction. Then we're going to do everything we can to not impact our students in the instructional program.
Be sure to share that with the community when you have that community.
We will.
Um, well, all construction involves noise. Fortunately, the, a lot of it comes from demo. Like when we were at the high school here, and you're breaking a brick building. Fortunately, existing buildings on this campus are, aren't built of the same structure. They're, um, they're going to come down a lot easier and quieter. Now, when you, you put your buildings back together, there is some noise involved with the construction of the structural steel. But it's not really that bad. And it's not, again, the noise basically comes from the demo of the existing buildings. I don't expect it to be, I expect it to be lower than normal.
And Russ does a fantastic job, though, along with Larry, uh, working with the principal of the school site with their weekly meetings to make sure there's any significant activity or thing that's going to take place, that they can work around as much as possible with construction so that it doesn't impact the instructional day.
And it's actually a contractual requirement that we work around testing times at every campus, it's senior district for new contracts. So, and then before we start a project, I always get a test schedule from the principal. They outline which time of the year is, are more important than others, which buildings are more important during those times. And contractors, I've worked with them, I haven't had any resistance with things, so I don't expect any problems.
Just because vehicles in and out of campus, how many, where the.
Well, right now, there'll be, yeah, there'll be, per phase here, these lay-down areas is, is kind of where we'll, we'll corral the construction vehicles. We can't get all the vehicles on the site. So we'll, we'll vote what we can within the dotted areas, and then the other ones will have to be out on the street. Like Alex said, it's a pretty tight campus, so. Obviously, the parking lot's not going to be used. I mean, I've gone there for several site meetings, and I can guarantee my car on site.
We can't do community meetings, the residents will.
Uh, I don't know if that's covered or not.
This, this, our phasing portion and the complete lay-down has not been, has not been shared.
I don't think it's established, we made our first one, still working on it. So we'll, we'll do the best we can to try to make everybody happy, but something's, it's got to be a little away from everybody. Is there any other questions?
And we thank the opportunity to share an update. Again, through the slide, you saw tentative timeline. There is something that's out of our, out of our control. And that again is we're meeting the needs that are requested from DSA. So we have no jurisdiction over them and we are at their mercy, basically. There is some little wiggle room in here where we think we'll be fine. But still, we want to make sure everyone stands as tentative based upon them giving us approved plans. I would like to bring Mark back to. Again, we know that the board's interest and board's goal is to have world-class facilities for our students. And also for us to be very appreciative of the support from our community with the bond measures. And to make sure that we safeguard those funds so that we can do the most for those facilities. And to make sure that anytime we have an opportunity to lower the burden on our taxpayers, that we take advantage of that. And we always look at the market to see what we can do to say thank you again to our taxpayers who are supporting our students. Especially with the three measure, three measure Rs that were successfully approved by taxpayers. So on a quarterly basis, Mark and I, we review the market. He does most of the work and see what opportunities are there for our district to look at some of the bonds that we have funded. Back on March 28th, one of our facilities meetings, we brought some information regarding an opportunity to refinance two of the funds in the 2006 to the series. At that time, it was approximately $2 million. And we were very excited to bring that forward to the, to the board. But after analysis and looking at, and looking at some forecasts, we felt there was opportunity down in the near future to bring more savings to our taxpayers. And we took the opportunity to hold off and be a little conservative, slow down, and see if those were going to materialize. And I'm really happy to have Mark here to share what the current market is and what potential more savings we have for our taxpayers that we can take advantage if the board so chooses to have the next board meeting. Mark?
Thank you, Alex. Good evening. So to recap, and a lot of this is just updated information from the board workshop in March. But we're looking at two series of bonds from the 2006 election, the 2006 series B and the 2006 series C highlighted here in blue. And as Alex mentioned, we've kind of been watching the market since that March meeting. And interest rates were kind of slowly going down a little bit, you know, every day, every week after that March meeting. And then the first week in August, things really accelerated. In a matter of a couple of days, interest rates dropped by about a quarter of a percent. And Alex and I were on the phone probably that week deciding that, all right, it's probably a good time to accelerate the timeline and look at bringing this back to the board. You can see that the interest rates hit a low at the end of April, bounced up a little bit. It's hard to see, but they've come back down again these last few days. In March, this index that we looked at, this is a 10-year bond index. The rate was 2.05, 2.05%. Today, it's at 1.4. So the interest rates have come down very significantly since, since March. So what that means, kind of bottom line, dropping down to the bottom right of this table, the savings right now are as of September 12th, when we ran the numbers, about $3.2 million of savings. $3,189,000 of savings that would go back to taxpayers in the form of lower tax rates on their, their tax bills. And then you can see the savings broken out between the series B and the series C. The series B is a very small financing, very small amount of savings. It's worth doing only because we're refinancing the series C bonds. There's no added cost to refunding the series B bonds. So you can see we've got $73,000 of cost allocated. That's just basically splitting the total cost proportionally based on the size. So it's not like we're adding $73,000 of cost to refinance the Bs. The cost would be pretty much the same if we didn't refinance the series B bonds. The total savings have just been down a little bit. So again, makes sense to do since we're doing the C, but standing, doing that on its own would not make sense. And here, we presented the savings on an annual basis. And also on the far right, you can see the tax rate, projected tax rate impact. Most of the, the bonds are kind of on the longer end. So you can see 2031 to 2034 is where the bulk of the savings are. $445,000 a year in those, those years. So there we see the tax rate estimated to drop about $2 per 100,000. In the earlier years, you know, somewhere between 75 and 80 cents per 100,000. It's a little bit smaller in the earlier years. In terms of timing, as Alex mentioned, we'd be prepared to bring resolution back to the board at your October 10th meeting. Shortly after that, we would have a conference call with the rating agencies, update the district's credit rating. As you hopefully remember, we've got excellent credit ratings, AA2 from Moody's and AA minus from Standard and Poor's. So that AA category kind of puts you amongst kind of the top group of school districts. You could basically post the employment official statement. This is the offering document that discloses all the pertinent information that an investor would want to know about the district. We're very hard of a staff and council to make sure that everything that should be disclosed to the, to the investors is disclosed to the investors. Sell the bonds on November 5th. That would lock in the interest rates, set the interest rates. And then wrap everything up, do all the paperwork, and finalize everything by December 4th. So November 5th is basically on this timeline, the date when we lock in the interest rates, lock in the savings up until that point. That $3.2 million number fluctuates based on what happens with the market. One thing that has changed since the district last issued bonds in 2015. In 2016, the legislature approved SDE 1029 that, among other things, requires all municipal bond issuers to have a formal debt policy. A lot of the, what goes into the policy was already really written into the education code in terms of limiting what types of debt the school district could issue. But as part of a good governance requirement, there now needs to be a formal debt policy. And then there's also a new report that gets filed with the state treasurer's office called an annual debt transparency report that's only for bonds issued after 2017. So there will be another additional kind of filing requirement that the district has every year to pay the treasurer's office on. How many bonds you have outstanding, we pay it off in particular here. And so here are kind of the list, the high level list of requirements in the debt management policy. That policy will be brought at the same time as the resolution to the refinancing bonds. So that policy needs to be in place before you can issue the bonds. Some of them, the purposes that that may be issued for, the types of debt that may be issued, a lot of that was already in the education code, so this is now formalized as a policy. Some other things are good governance. So again, the relationship of your debt and why you're issuing debt relative to your budget and incorporating that into your budget. Having goals and policies around why you would be issuing debt, certain types of debt. And then internal control procedures about monitoring the debt and making the decisions around issuing debt. So looking for questions.
I have a question. So on the potential financing schedule, you said that November 5th would be the lock-in day. So at what point, you know, because as you indicated, we all know interest rates can change. At what point do we say, okay, yes, not worth it anymore?
That's a good question. If we go back. If we are, let's see, the average rate on that 10-year rate going back the past 10 years is 2 and 1/4%. And we're at 1.4% right now. You know, I think, and we were 2.05 in March. So even in, in March at 2.05, we were starting to say, this is looking like a, you know, a good opportunity. So I think if we can stay, you know, at least reasonably below, significantly below that 2.05 kind of level, then I think it would make sense. If something were to change and kind of rates were, start moving well north of that 2% kind of level, kind of looking at that average, then we might say, well, what's going on? Why are rates moving up that quickly? And does it make sense to keep moving forward? Or do we potentially wait? Part of, part of the strategy and the thinking was we may be waiting until the district issued its last series of measure R bonds. Because then you could kind of, you know, get more contents of scale by doing all the bonds together. Seeing how much the rates dropped, rates basically hitting historic lows again in August. We thought, you know, let's, let's get this heat up, ready to go. And if we can kind of hold rates above this level, you know, it makes sense to.
And is there any cost to us and if we back out?
The only cost, and.
The cost if you don't do it?
Sure, the only potential cost if you don't do it, and we've tried to keep this in a very tight window, is the rating. So, so for example, REs, legal counsel, putting all the documents together, all of that's contingent. The only time where we get any bill is from the rating agencies. Once we engage them, have that conference call, they have to charge you something. So it wouldn't be the full amount of their normal bill, but you would potentially be getting a bill from the rating agency. If we had that meeting on the 14th and we get to November 4th and decide, you know what? The market's just not where we want it to be. Then it's just a matter of time. If we can get to market soon enough, we can still use that rating. If not, then, then yes, you know, and that's, you know, off the top of my head, maybe that would cost more. So we have two different rating agencies.
I understand the request. Could you, the graph that we saw with the, the market?
Yes.
Could you give us the copy that you have up there? Because ours don't have all the dates across the bottom. They just have like 10 years lineup.
Yeah, probably from kind of the printing.
Yeah. Did yours have?
No.
It's a different, this is a different version of his.
I'll send a PDF and that way it'll, we won't have to, sometimes I know PowerPoint can do weird things on different printers.
Page eight, one time, I guess, page eight. But I know it's working. This page adds the Y 2030 and 20, 2031 is the year that both the savings can, can be. From 31 to 34, the, the, the debt savings. Yeah. 445, 446, 447. And, and how they related to the, the, the next column?
Sure, so, so the bonds that we're refinancing, primarily we're looking at the, the series C bonds. Those payments go all the way up until 2034. And the principal payments are really all between 2031 and 2034. So that's, that's why there are more savings in that 2031 to 34 range on an annual basis compared to the 21 to 30 period. And so, because that's where basically the principal payments are, as we refinance those principal payments with lower interest rates or lower interest and the principal amount that's due in those years.
So paying interest from the first date until 3030, both of interest?
Correct, that's mostly, that's mostly interest and then the principal and interest in 2031 to 2034.
Why, why is that a straight line?
Well, part of it has to do with this particular series of bonds and how it was issued relative to all of the other 2006 bonds. So the election 2006 bonds. So the overall kind of plan or goal typically when you have a bond measure is you're setting up all of this series of bonds to have a certain payment amount every year. Because the, you know, let's say you have a $60 per 100,000 tax rate for a particular bond measure. You're then setting up, you know, the two, three, four series of bonds that you're issuing from that bond measure. Those payments combine to have that, to stay below that $60 per 100,000 tax rate. I'm just using that as the prop 39 of it. And so when you start looking at each individual series of bonds, you might see some differentiation in the principal amount. So I'd have to go back and look. Potentially, you had your series A and your series B bonds that had more principal going out until 2030. So then the series C bonds had had the principal coming due after the principal for series A and series B were, were being paid off. So that's likely the reason why there's more principal there than in the earlier years for series C. Because you already have the series A and the series B bonds that had the principal in those earlier years. And then the column on the far right, it's a little bit more complicated and more things go into it than this. But if you basically take that debt service amount, that kind of annual payment amount, you divide that by your property taxes, that's the tax rate. And so this dollar amount savings on the far right, that's, you know, when we reduce the payments by $135,000 a year, let's say in year 21, then, or let's say 22, because that's where we have just the series C bonds only, that equates to about 87 cents per 100,000 on a tax rate. And so it's basically just taking those, the savings amount, dividing it by your total property taxes.
You know that we don't get much saving until.
Right, for this, for this particular, this particular series, yes, most of the savings, you know, when people see it on their, their tax bill would be on the, starting in 23.
They depend on the, the, this particular series or the financing company or how?
It's, it's based on this particular series. Well, not really. We couldn't, you, you could change this and say, we want to pay the bonds off earlier and have no, no savings in the early years and shorten the term. But we couldn't create more savings in the earlier years because it would basically, we just have to, you know, take out what little principal there even is in those years.
My, my question, my question is even, so the first 20 years, even some point the interest dropped again. That we, this doesn't mean it says we can refinance because we'll pay interest, the principal is still the same.
Well, no, you will be able to refinance these again, so likely.
But this will help?
It would help, it would reduce the, it potentially could reduce the interest cost again. The challenge will honestly be that interest rates are so low right now that, you know, the odds of in eight years from now, rates being low enough that we can refinance again. You may be able to do it, but we're probably, well, it may be worth it, but we're probably not talking about another $3 million of savings. Maybe it's half a million of savings or a million of savings. But it's, you know, the amount of savings is relative to how high your interest rate is today relative to what the market is. So we're, we're replacing bonds that right now have an average interest rate of 4.6% with bonds that are going to have an average interest rate of 2.5%.
I just want to say, you know, recently, there's been numerous articles in the paper of school district bonds. And companies that do the refinancing, flipping them, selling them. And then also school districts not having transparency in dealing with bonds. So I thought, when I saw my, I saw this topic. So I thought, when I saw my, I saw this topic, I felt it was a no-brainer that we should refinance if we can do it at a low rate. There's no question about that. I was actually more concerned about our rating as a school district if we do this. And so to do my due diligence, I look at your company on the internet and this was the other board members, as a brief summary, it says that Dale Scott and Company Incorporated, this is a summary of several websites, is one of the oldest and most conservative financial advisory firms in the state. They have extensive experience in working with mid and large sized districts and serve as financial advisors to the California Board of Associations and short-term borrowing programs and are recommended by the school services of California. Since being founded in 1987, DSA has served as financial advisor for over 1,000 Californian K to 14 financing totaling over $15 billion. In 2014, they bought over 100 financings to the market, nearly double the amount that their nearest competitor. So you have a very good rating. So I feel more confident.
Yes. We try our best.
Again, I want to thank you for the opportunity. And this will be coming forward in the October meeting. And I echo this pride's comments regarding the rates. If there's anything that was to change, we will definitely let the board know. And I'm going to be working with Mark to see if we can actually provide, if the board is so true, takes action on it, to provide me some weekly updates on current rates so that you're aware of what the market condition is so that you could be, you feel confident and secure that we're doing the best for our taxpayers.
And we need to be sure to share that, like, one minute so they know we're saving, saving on.
We'll work with them. The Gina Ward on that. This concludes our presentation, out of order, but it concludes it. And again, I thank Mark for being here tonight.
On behalf of the board, thank you so much and everybody that presented and gave us all that important information. We will reset to closed session at 5:25 PM. Thank you.
I apologize to Mark. I didn't recognize Mark as a back there. Our bond per, when he's on, I'll mark those, so please. I apologize.